It's called the Beatty City Council. This is a special city council meeting held on July the 15th for the purpose of amending a salary ordinance, fixing the salary for the director of utilities. With that, I'd like to stand and do the pledge. Debbie, if you'll read us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, mighty God, in whose name we pray, in whose name we worship.
You remain standing. Reverend Curtis Hurley is coming in tonight to ask the blessing on our meeting.
Let's pray. Almighty God, your wisdom is greater than our comprehension or our knowledge. Your heart is larger than our compassion. And your will for justice and for good exceeds any that we may strive for. And yet, we do continue to strive because we do desire to be faithful to your will. And so, we pray for your spirit to be here in this meeting, that the matters which are discussed, the way in which they are discussed, may be full of respect and dignity and always be seeking your will and your heart for this city and for its government. With humility, we stand before you and seek your guidance. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. We only have one item on our agenda tonight. It's been recommended by the Corps of Public Works and Safety that we change the salary ordinance for the utility director, and I'll refer to the court treasurer.
Well, we've just changed the biweekly salary. It was $2,078.70 for biweekly, and we're asking to change it to $2,761.56, which would give a total compensation package for the new utility director of $85,000.
I'm open for discussion.
Your honor, do you want discussion with the council or the folks out there?
Which do you prefer, Reverend? Anybody out there like to discuss this?
Your name, please.
We're gonna say I need you.
Come on. Come on up, Fred.
Before you say something, Ruby, that $85,000 is comparable to, I know we don't have a current director right now, but that would be the 73?
No, with, um, the manager was, had a salary of $67,624 plus longevity pay of $6,000.
So, that's 85 with no longevity, if it's a brand-new person versus 67 with his longevity.
Plus longevity.
Yes, again, please say, uh, money. $12,000.
Okay. My name is Trudy Soller, 2904 West Nettie.
Thank you.
You can come up, so I know when to call you.
Okay.
The director we had, Nettie, was making 65?
67, 662.40.
Why is this guy so much better and want more money? And now, other bad is getting.
You want me to answer? Okay. The man that we're trying to hire is now receiving $110,000 where he works.
Why would he want to come down here, then?
Because his company is asking him to go to New York, and he prefers to stay in Indiana, and he likes our St. Gabriel Church, and his wife's willing to live here.
She's moving right away?
No, she would not move here for a year. They have a two-year-old, and they have a senior in high school. They would wait till the senior graduates from high school.
How could we give money when we don't have the money?
This is different money. This is utility.
But we still have to have the money to pay it.
It's not. It doesn't come from city taxes. It comes from utilities.
Who did the job whenever, um, Nettie was off?
It was Bill Ammerman. Prior to that, it was Harold Ellison. Prior to that, it was the other.
No, I mean, who did it? You're saying that now the utility guys did any of the work whenever Nettie never was gone?
Oh, whenever he was, like, on vacation or something.
Yeah.
Just kind of like it is today, it was on autopilot.
No, they have to have somebody in charge if he's gone.
About anybody.
So, you're saying no supervisor, nobody?
No, we have a group leader with...
Who's the group leader?
Whoever's on that crew, but they're union people, and they don't supervise each other.
I know that, but who is supervising?
Who's the group leader on the water crew?
Larry Russell.
What's his name?
Larry Russell.
Have you ever did it?
Who's on the sewer crew, the group leader? Winston.
The sewer crew is Eric Kidd.
Have you ever did it when anybody, Nettie was off?
Officially, no.
No. You never did it one day? Well, I think we ought to hire somebody in town. I don't think you ought to get somebody out of town. If that guy has to go to DC or where he has to go, let him go.
Ruby, it would take me...
I know, I don't understand it, God.
Not exactly.
Well, I didn't understand it until a little while ago.
Let me tell you, there's a company, there's a group in Indianapolis called IDIM, which is Indiana Department of Environmental Management. They actually tell us how we have to run the utility.
So, they're saying they...
No, no, let me explain the whole thing to you. They say that we have to have a person of responsible charge at the wastewater plant that has a Class IV operator license.
Class III operator.
Class III. They have to have Class III operator.
And there's somebody else has Class III, or they can learn it?
Yes, we have two Class III operators down there that are union people. And Brad is a Class I operator. He worked in the sewage plant. How many years, Brad?
Fifteen.
You worked down there, and then he bid in and took the job up here. And what's your classification now? What are you up here? What's that called?
The stocking materials.
He handles everything. He buys the pipe and all that stuff. He takes care of all that, meters.
Everybody in town, this guy's the only one qualified out in Indianapolis.
No, no. We have to have an operator of responsible charge down there, and we have interviewed seven or eight. We've actually received applications from 12. Only two local people. And he comes with all the qualifications.
But he's telling you what he wants, not what you want to give him.
He said that this is what it would take to get him.
Well, if he needs a job, then what's near a small town?
Well, we're kind of, we're kind of in a bind. What are we gonna do? We have to have somebody by August 1st. IDIM's telling us we gotta have someone in that position.
Oh, well, I can't believe that you don't pay that kind of money. Is anybody worth that kind of money?
We're actually saving about $30,000 to $40,000 because we're not gonna have an assistant. We're actually saving money.
Did Nettie have an assistant?
He wanted one, but I couldn't get one. I kept trying, and we couldn't find one.
Well, why would this guy even think about getting an assistant?
He said we don't need an assistant.
Was that kind of money?
No.
I don't think we need to pay that kind of money.
We can't get any...
You know, you advertise in the paper, your budget, you say, "This, I don't have nothing to do with it." Your budget, we can't do this. We had to get our taxes to give the budget. Something ain't right. All of once, we got money, and then next day, we got money?
They're totally separate pots of money. We can't...
Right, I know, but you still gonna have to pay it.
But it comes from utility funds, which are paid by ratepayers. They're not paid by taxpayers.
Am I a ratepayer?
Yes.
Of course you are.
Well, I thought I was!
But that money comes from, it's not the same as the taxpayer money that we use to run the city.
You can't use utility money to run the city?
No, no.
Okay.
Where's the utility money to go for, then?
To run the utilities.
So, that's what we're gonna hire that guy by?
To run utilities.
And save money.
It has nothing to do with taxpayer money. No money will go into this with taxpayer...
Well, my opinion, and a lot of, that's why we don't get nothing down here because the city, other people don't show up. And I know you get discussed because I show up. The comment you made at the last meeting, you weren't here the last time?
I wasn't here at the last meeting, but...
Excuse me? I said the last one, I'm here, but it's time for that. I had to leave early for another meeting, and it was a joke. I watched it on television, plus many people told me that you thought, "Well, where'd she go? Here she wanted the agenda to last, and she's gone."
You did, and I said that. You asked me for months to put the thing at the end and up at the end, and then you left.
I did, yes. I had a meeting to go to.
I thought that was rather strange, that you left.
No, we had several meetings.
I'm sorry if it appended you.
Well, I think it was very insulting. I think you're a bully when it comes to stuff like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else out there like to speak?
I've just got to ask to let raise our...
If you come to the podium and state your name and...
Will it raise our rates? Will it do anything to the rates?
No, it's built into the rate already.
It is.
It's built into the rate. Okay. Anybody else out there want to speak? John?
People of this quality, people who have this job in other small towns, what do they make? I mean, can you get somebody for this position who has this qualification?
We have been looking for about three and a half months, and we haven't found anybody.
Okay.
We've advertised in every trade journal and every place we know to advertise.
I guess something else that needs to be said, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but something, I mean, other things have been brought to our attention, that we are having several long-term employees, some older guys, are retiring. So, we're gonna have a real deficit at the utilities. So, we are gonna have to hire, and IDIM has actually also set a new position that no one can qualify for at the present time. So, we'll have to, we'll have to actually hire somebody to fill that as well.
It's called a pre-treatment chemist. And we need somebody to train that pre-treatment chemist.
So, I guess, so we've kind of got two different things going on.
We'll have to also post the jobs down at the utility, and the union will have, I think it's, what is it, 10 days to bid into those jobs, just like you did at Visteon. You can bid on those jobs.
So, people inside will climb the ladder, per se. And we're already really at bare bones, are we not, Brad? I mean, pretty lean. So, these replacements, though, will not be in addition to, except for the one. Is that right?
They'll be just replacements.
We discussed that earlier.
And even that one, because Mary Ellen was serving in that position. She was serving in about three or four different positions, and that's what IDIM doesn't like. If you read your letter, they said all the things she was doing, and really, they want the pre-treatment coordinator and the chemist to just do that.
And that's all very confusing unless you really know what you're talking about.
Now, we have a, we have a report card here that was done on the 8th. It's three pages long, and we have some unsatisfactory, we got some satisfactory, and we got some marginal grades because of the way we're operating.
So, if we continued, what would happen? What would IDIM do?
It says they're gonna levy a fine if we don't correct these things.
So, basically, these qualifications that you have, these W-1, W-2, W-3 things, and even W-4, these are certifications that you have so you can sign off that says that you're qualified to supervise? No?
Not in terms of supervising.
That's not the right word.
You have to be the person in responsible charge you're signing off that...
Everything, the work's done, the job's done.
Everything in the wastewater treatment plant is met all the proper qualifications.
Well, let me read a couple of these, if you'll bear with me. Facility site was rated as marginal. The facility is showing signs of excessive wear, including crumbling of concrete, cross-sections missing, and primary clarifiers leaking. Operation was rated as unsatisfactory due to inadequate funding of proper or essential operation of waste treatment facilities. This is a violation of 327-1AC-5-22-10, which states in part, "The owner or the governing body in a wastewater treatment plant shall be responsible for providing adequate funding and oversight, and oversight, to ensure the proper operation, maintenance, management, supervision of said plant. Specifically, this facility is understaffed. There are only four operators on staff in addition to the superintendent. These four operators are responsible for operation of the WWTP Maintenance Wastewater Treatment Plant Maintenance and monitoring laboratory testing and industrial sampling. Normally, a plant is staffed with two operators on four days per week, and four operators three days per week. Recently, due to a six-week leave of another extended absence, the plant was running with only two operators. One operator had to work for six weeks with no days off. The superintendent is retiring at the end of the week, and the plant must be under the responsible charge of a certified operator. It's highlighted, the city has 30 days to notify IDIM of a change in certified operator."
What happened, though? We paid this guy this kind of money, and all these pipes in town are getting bad. You put a new part on something, and then something else breaks down because you're just putting more pressure on it. Who's gonna pay that expense? It's gonna be adding on a water bill.
Actually, we're saving money by getting him.
Yes, okay, but you get him, I'm saying all the time, our water lines are getting bad.
But we have more money now to repair them. We're saving money.
And they won't pay a lot of water bill then.
How much would we say we're saving by doing this? We calculated it.
$30,000 to $40,000.
Okay. That's a lot of money. I mean...
We had, we had, when we fixed a water line and a sewer line today, Brad? What else did we? Did we do two sewer lines or one? We got a sewer line book for tomorrow morning at 8:00. People have been yelling about. We got that being fixed. We have two crews. We have a sewer crew and water crew, and they're busy every day.
I didn't say that. I'm just saying, if we had a magic, magic, major job breakdown all over town, you don't have money to fix it. Your money finally runs out.
Uh, I want to...
You ain't put it in there, it sure ain't...
I want to read this one more time to you. Listen to you.
No, you don't have to read to me. It's gonna be your way.
No, the superintendent is retiring at the end of this week. This was written on the 8th. The plant must be under the responsible charge of a certified operator. The city has 30 days to notify IDIM of the change in certified operator. That was Mary Ellen. Makes it quite clear. Goes on and on and on.
The cost savings that they're talking about, we actually currently don't have an assistant manager, and they're actually taking that salary and foregoing that. And then, we're also actually not current, right as of today, correct? We don't have an office manager either?
We haven't had an office manager for almost a month.
So, part of this, that you're saying we're saving, we're not spending now?
Yeah, correct.
This is all happening because all these people are retiring.
And we were not, we're not gonna have an assistant or office.
This is the last statement in this letter, Ruby. Within 30 days of receipt of this letter, a written detailed response documenting correction of each of the concerns listed above and/or plan for assuming future compliance must be submitted to this office. Failure to respond adequately to this office may result in formal enforcement action. Please direct your responses of this letter to the attention of Becky Rohr. I talked to Becky this afternoon, and she said, "I'll give you until the 1st of August to have the man in place," or the person in place. Doesn't have to be a man, it could be anybody certified, "in place and the corrections down at the plant." We've gotta have a plan of correcting all this stuff in 30 days. Now, is it that my way? No, it's IDIM's idea. But this letter is written to me. I said, "Well, you know, I can't just go do these things. I have a board of works. I have a city council." She said, "I don't care about the board of works or the council. It's your responsibility to get them in line and get going." Now, what would you do?
I wouldn't give him that kind of money, most of all.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question in regards to a proposed salary of $85,000 and the current salary, I think you said with the...
Seventy-four.
...is around 74. Okay. What happened, what would happen in the event this council voted not to pay that $85,000? Where are we at then?
I would be forced to hire a company around the utility.
Thank you. You wouldn't reconsider someone local and let them take that wastewater 3 in November?
Well, let me just ask that question. Brad and I talked today, I mean, you know, I'm all for hiring somebody from within the city. Now, I'll be getting two different views here. One is that you can get a temporary license until you take the test. I'm hearing from IDIM, that's not true. You cannot get a temporary until you take...
Did you talk to IDIM yourself?
Talked, the mayor talked to the IDIM. I tried, I asked him earlier if we could get ahold of Becky, but she wasn't there when we were in there talking. Yeah, 'cause I want to know if that's true or not. So, that's a major issue. Number two is that sewer plant's really important. You don't want to drink doo-doo water. So, it's extremely important that whoever takes over the plant is trained and knows what they're doing. Number two, most important, Brad, I was thinking about is, and again, this is the mayor telling me, so I'll trust him on this, I'll look it up. The pass rate for the test for the W-3 is 17%. I'm not willing to take that chance at 17% pass rate to wait till November. We'll lose the man that we already have in place.
Who's the guy you already got in place?
No, if this guy takes, he's not, I don't know if he's gonna take it or not, but I'm saying...
Yeah, you said you gave him the money.
Yeah, well, he hasn't accepted it yet, but I'm just saying, let's say he'll take it.
And give you money.
We don't have to worry about a W-3. He has a W-4. I mean, he's even more. He's done this before. He's gone into other towns who's had the same issues we've had and made it, made the place work and work well. That's what he does for a living.
And saves money, Chris.
And saves money, right. Nothing against you, Brad, it's just that in general, 17% is low. I'm not willing to take that chance.
Well, there's some other facts to that story.
But isn't that true, what they say the pass rate's 17%?
For the wastewater 3, no.
Well, what is it for 4? It's for 4, I'm sorry. What's it for 3?
When we were talking, I can't quote it.
Okay.
We were talking about the water. The water tests have this kind of pass rate. And as I told the mayor today, they have, mostly the people that take these tests are people that are not in the industry, and they're trying to come in to it. They have no experience. If you looked at the pass rates for people that are employed in them, they would be much higher. They're still very hard tests.
Right. You have to have two years to take the test. You have to have two years' experience to take the test.
And you have that, except, well, yes, but what you don't have, which I'm not clear about, is, is, do you get a provisional license or do you not? If you don't, I mean, we're getting two different stories. We're getting the Alliance, and we're getting IDIM. If you don't get a provisional, it's a, it's a no-brainer. I mean, it doesn't work.
Well, there, that is still not the only other option. There's another guy that works at the sewage plant, but does have a degree present.
But see, here's what we're doing. We are trying to...
At a water plant, you just moved a guy into that.
Right.
It'd be the same situation as what you just did a couple of weeks ago.
Right. I think we just, you just did that.
Well, my, I'm just saying, my view is that you, you hire the best qualified people. The best qualified people, if they're from within town, you do it. If they're not, you don't. I mean, this, it's not, it's not running a taxi cab. It's running a sewer plant. And I would, I would hope that the W-3 had already been taken by our candidates and perhaps a W-4, but they haven't been. And so, and we have to August 1st. So, that's all, I have nothing against anybody in this town.
Yeah, please, please.
So, I'm done. That was my view.
Several things that, this whole process has been confusing because when we've, when the mayor and I first started talking about the assistance position, I was told that a WT3 license is what, and these things don't happen overnight. They only offer them twice a year. So, you gotta file an application, and you gotta study because they're very hard, and then you have to take the test. Well, then, we've switched gears now.
Oh, wait a minute. Why did we ask for WT3? Because if we were going for an assistant, we wanted the manager to have the wastewater and the assistant to have the, that water, the freshwater, because the union doesn't like union people supervising people.
The manager that we had, that I was applying for the assistant, already had the water.
They had the water?
Yeah.
Right.
So, that was just fit, that fit at the time?
That was, the manager was a water licensed person.
But at that time, Mary Ellen wasn't retired.
That's more important than...
Mary Ellen, we had no, no idea that Mary Ellen was gonna retire. She qualified the plant, and there was no problem.
Nobody had any idea any of this was gonna happen. That's why nobody's already licensed and ready.
Okay, let me just stop you there, and I'm not blowing anybody's daddy, but we could have taken this test 10 years ago.
Sure.
I mean, we could have taken it. It doesn't matter whether or not there's a job available. You take, I think, you take the test. If there is a job available, you've got it.
Part of the reason is, is because we've had such steady leadership. You know, we had Harold, who was 40, 50 years. Then we had Bill. Nobody had any reason to think Bill was going anywhere.
Right.
It just kind of boom, happened. But over the last year, people, especially me, have got serious about doing these things, but it takes time.
How long have they always had to have these W? I mean, is that a, from the beginning?
Yeah, Mary Ellen's been the longstanding person that has signed those. Yeah. And before her, it was Harold.
Well, Gary's coming from a profession, I mean, he's a dentist. He's like, he's like the doctor of, I mean, he's the doctor of dentistry. You're not like the doctor.
Thank you very much, yeah. Not a real one.
But, I mean, but, but you know, I'm a technologist, so a lot of my coworkers, they don't take tests unless, A, they're being paid for it, B, it's required for the job. So, you know...
And nothing against his person.
We agree to disagree. I mean, we...
Nothing against the person because I don't want to be on television criticizing him. I'm probably gonna be working for him, it sounds like, but he's got a good resume. He's got a lot, he's had a lot of jobs. He's moved around a lot. You know, I've been here. This is where I live. I just want to move up in a position.
I can qualify why he's got a lot of jobs. He worked for one company, and he's been assigned to these different places, just like now, they're wanting to assign him to another place. He's been, he's been sent in to fix this, sent in to fix that, but he works for the same company all the time. Now, I'm not, I'm not positive you'll be working for him tomorrow, and I don't know where we're gonna go with this. It's a difficult situation. It really is.
I'm trying to be very respectful in this. I mean, I can see where you all are coming from, but this can all be worked out real easy. That's the truth. There's a guy out there that can sign the paperwork starting tomorrow.
For?
He's already in place.
For which entity?
For the sewage plant.
And then, who do we have for the...
The guy you put up there last...
It's temporary.
Okay.
Temporary until we get going.
And I'm not saying in any way that your director shouldn't be licensed. I feel like you should, but it doesn't have to happen today.
So, what you're saying is, is we, we have somebody now. If, if we find out that you could be doing the second one?
Either A, I could be, and it's possible that I'm incorrect. I would like to ask them myself and clarify that. Either A, I, I could be in, I, it's possible that I'm incorrect. I would like to ask them myself and clarify that.
And then at some point, there still needs to be like the umbrella person, and that's, that's the manager.
Yeah.
It's just too hard to understand.
Well, and I, I think he's right. I think we could work that out. But here's my problem. Because of the way they wanna operate the plant now, they want this pre-treatment coordinator and chemist in place, and they want it in there immediately because it's phosphorus.
What'd you say immediately? I mean, it's not today. When is immediately?
It's right away. They want.
That's what they said. Okay.
Okay.
August first.
I, then I would have to either go out and hunt one of those that's already qualified, or we take the person that I talked to you about, if that person's willing, that has a degree in biology, but then we don't have somebody to train that person, because Brad can't train her, and the guy at the plant can't train her, because he doesn't know anything about it. It takes this man here that we have to pay the salary to, to train her.
Answer that, Brad. How would you, how would you take care of that if we have to have trainers and we can't do them?
Relatively unfamiliar with pre-treatment.
Okay.
But I have worked with that program when I was employed there, and I am confident that I could get up to snuff on that pretty quick. There are a lot of, uh, like the Alliance that we were talking about earlier, that's a parenting organization. They give you technical advice. They would help. IDIM helps.
But you do understand, I mean, I hope you do, the, the limer that we, I mean, we're just saying okay to the bunny. I mean, we're not, I just wanna feel good about what I do. Uh, is that, with all that being said, why would I wanna take the chance on what-ifs, what-ifs, what-ifs when I have a sure thing? That's all I'm saying. When we have a sure thing and all these what-ifs are in there.
Is anything really sure in life?
This is.
We have nothing in.
I mean, this guy is sure thing.
That's what I mean.
I mean, this guy's a sure thing. I mean, he, look how many other water plants that he's, you know, that he's taken over and taking care of. I would say it's more of a sure thing than all these what-ifs. And that's all I'm saying. It's for the safety of the community, it's for not getting sewer in the water, and, and that's all I'm saying, because our plant is deteriorating quite quickly. So that's it. I'm done.
Mr. Mayor?
But you're losing one person, and you're saying that the, we've left, we've lost the manager, and all the other people there ran it then and they're running it now. How much different can it be? I, I guess I'm, I'm wondering, okay, IDIM brought in this new pre-treatment job. If no one has these, if not many, so many cities are lacking this W-four, who is, who trains these new, this new position? There's gotta be a way. You don't have, I mean, it's not gonna be.
They do it like Brad is. He is a W-one. He, he, he had his years of experience and went and took a test. And now he has enough years of experience, he can go get to take a test. If you have a degree in the proper field, you can skip a year of training and, one year and take the test.
So if, if this young person comes with a degree, will they be granted X amount of time to get that qualification, to take that test?
No, they'll be able to do the work under the director that has the W-four. They'll be able to do that work.
So you're saying it's either that or the option would be to hire somebody that already has the, and what kind of?
No, that person cannot go in and do that. They'll have to do it under his responsibility.
The only thing that we don't presently have here is a pre-treatment, a knowledgeable pre-treatment person.
We have a chemist?
How much would that cost?
But we have one that just left that no doubt would help. You know, you might have to hire her for a time as a consultant or whatever, get somebody else, but she, she's very good at it. And she knew, when she took that job, she didn't know anything about it. You know, she just learned it.
She went right out of high school.
Right. Well, I mean, you know, they're.
College.
The government is, it's, it's the government there, I mean, putting restrictions on things. Um, so if you, but you can't hire somebody that's already a qualified pre-treatment?
Well, I'm sure they are, but it'd be the same thing as trying to find, because other cities are going through the same thing, because PERF is offering this early retirement or whatever it is they're offering.
If you hired one from outside, would it be increased salary? Would it be like this?
Sure, I'm sure it would be.
Well, it's already an, an additional position, because we don't have one. Is that correct? Right.
Well, we had one of sorts, but she was doing too many duties.
Right.
And they want the duties now only to be pre-treatment and chemistry. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If I may, um, Mr. Calder had contacted me as a council person, and he expressed his desire for this position. And, and I, I told Mr. Calder, because he said he was gonna contact, um, council, board of public works, and express his desire. Now, as I told Mr. Calder, and I'm telling the press especially, the city council does not hire anyone. No one. I asked the mayor, if you remember earlier, in the event the city council does not appropriate this eighty-five thousand dollars, what's he gonna do? And he said, in the board of public works, who runs the city, not the council, he was gonna hire a consultant. Is that what you said, sir? Uh, I, again, I don't have that authority. I would go back to the board of works and ask them what they wanna do, but I would say the next step is a consultant. We've already contacted one. We've talked with one, because we're running out of time. But my point is, the city council hires no one. The city council appropriates the fund. Thank you.
Your honor, would an outside contractor cost the city per year? Do you have any idea?
Hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand a year.
Do you have that in writing or are you just estimating?
We, we interviewed a contractor two, three weeks ago, did we not?
For you left, yeah.
We called a contractor from St. Louis, Missouri, in here. There's two other contractors in Indiana that would be more expensive. One of them's American Water and, what's the other one called?
United Water?
United Water and, uh, and.
And they put this in writing?
M-one.
This is in writing?
They didn't, no, he gave us a figure. But I, I was there, frame you were there, weren't you? I think Mr. Baker was there.
Yes.
Because what, what happens is a company comes in here, and they hire these people to do it, but they have to pay money too. That's why it's more expensive. And then you lose control. And if you hire, say you sign a contract with somebody for three years at this amount of money, and then your people are gone, and then pretty soon they raise the rate. Besides that, it violates the union contract. I can't privatize the, the wastewater plant. It violates the union contract. Does it, Brad? If I privatize the, does it not violate the union contract?
Well, if the employees stayed as members of the union, I, I mean, I hope nobody's given that serious thought.
No.
And that's not needed.
But I mean, that's what they wanna do. They wanna come in and run the entire plant. They don't wanna come in here and put one man in here. They wanna come in and run our plant. I don't want him in here running our plant. I don't want American Water in here. I don't want United Water in here.
Get away from that?
Yeah. Well, that's where this guy has been, and where was he?
Oh, no, no, he, he works for a company that goes into. I can't say, because he's still got his job, and I don't wanna get, get in trouble. I don't wanna lose his job, you know? This man's making a hundred and, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year now. Well?
Well, I, I think you're essentially saying that we only have one choice, and I, I think we're missing a couple components. I mean, you brought up a good point. I don't know if this person that signed so many of these things would be willing, and, and I don't, that's kinda my second thought, but my first thought is, is that since we have such a disagreement about whether your qualifications could hold and they would grant you some kind of interim thing, um, I'd like to see it in writing, yea or nay? I mean, I, I think we're going on a lot of guesswork.
What do we do about the trainer for the, the chemists and stuff? No matter, no matter what, he can't do that. We don't have anybody to do that, right?
Well, that's, that's probably part of your action plan. I don't.
But that has to be done right away, right?
I think that would, I think we need to ask, I think we need to ask some questions upon that. That's a new, if that's a new position, a new thing that they're wanting, and they're, and they're saying that your other person who was multi-tasking can't do, I think there's probably, they're, they're gonna have to have some kind of solution to this problem. I bet you there's tons of other.
Things. I've seen these inspections. This is their shot over the bow. This is to say, hey, your plant is understaffed, and you gotta look at doing things different than what you're doing now. And we do. I mean, we've been sure in all departments, but, with that antiquated plant in the shape it's in, if there's not enough people to do maintenance on the whole plant, it starts to fall apart pretty quick. And after four or five years of being sure of, really, no maintenance, uh, regular maintenance crew, it's starting to show its problems. And I think, I know. I mean, I've heard what they said, that they're just saying, hey, get it together, and, but they'll work with you. I mean, this, this stuff, I'm telling you, it can all be worked out if somebody desires to do so.
Well, I.
There's a guy there that can sign the paperwork.
Connie, Connie, would you read paragraph five of the IDIM report? I think it'll, you want it in writing. There it is.
Well, you know, what I'm saying is, is we had the disagreement about the Alliance telling him one thing or, you know, not being, not really comparing apples to apples.
Read, read paragraph five.
Yeah, that's the multitasking person they were talking about. Correct?
That, they wanna break that down and have two people.
Yeah.
And those, you know, to find a chemist or to find a, uh, pre-treatment coordinator is not the easiest thing in the world. I'm supposing they're probably as scarce as operators right now because of this retirement going on. In fact, she told me today, don't cry about it. Everybody's going through it. That's exactly what she told me.
Well, the letter was dated July eleventh. They gauge this thirty days maximum to make corrections, and time is going by.
Well, another factor too is, is that when you have people climbing up the ladder in any company or whatever, um, you know, you're not spending as much money. I mean, those people are getting increment raises, but then all the new hires are hired in at a lower, usually, you know, not, not the seniority, not the longevity, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, so you're, you're, you're saving money that way. And, and you're promoting from within, which is always good. Nobody likes PERF.
We figured it out the other day. If you go back to Bill, the utilities has lost about two hundred and forty years of experience this past year. And that, to me, is another reason why you need to keep somebody that is familiar with this facility, not just, uh, we talked about the wastewater plant. There's a four hundred miles of water and sewer lines between the water plant and the wastewater plant. There's a lot of other things, and, you know, experience is gonna be at a premium, experience here.
I'm gonna say one more thing, and then I'm gonna shut up.
Problems?
I.
I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
I hope you like Tom.
Yeah.
Um, well, I, I mean, we have a meeting next, we still have a meeting next week, correct?
Right, regular meeting.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna, can I make a motion?
Well, don't we have one? No, we don't have one on this.
No, we don't. You wanna say something first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We're complaining because Brad doesn't have this qualification, yet we keep talking about this chemist who has a master's or doctorate in biology, that also doesn't have the qualification that needs to be trained. Um, I don't really see much difference.
We don't have to have, that person doesn't have to be certified, but it has to go in there and start the job and be trained. Does that, that doesn't certify the plant. It's the, tell me how I say it, certify a person of responsible charge. I gotta have a person of responsible charge is what we're looking for.
Which we have somebody at the sewer plant that could be that person.
Now, I don't think he's, and I don't wanna say this, but I talked to him last week. I don't think he feels confident to go in there and sign papers right now and do it. Uh, he's never done that. He's, he's been an operator. But we are okay. All of our reports are up to date until the twenty-eighth of August. Our next report is due the twenty-eighth of August. By that time, we better have somebody can fill out all this stuff. We better have. Now, she told me on the phone today, you got to August first to tell me who it's gonna be. That's what she told me. You've read the letter. You can take it home with you. I'd be glad to give it to the press. I mean, it's pretty explicit. That's what they want. If we delay it another day, it just puts us backwards, backwards, backwards. The reason we're so late in getting this done is because we've interviewed, and when we thought we had somebody, they backed away from it, and this person may back away from it. When you got all these people that have all these years of experience that are all retiring at the same time, it's very difficult. And I've been believing that we should have the director in place first before we start replacing these other people. In other words, it's, look at his dentist place. You, you wouldn't put a whole bunch of people in his dentist place to work until you had a dentist there, right? And that's what I'm looking at. I wanna get the director in place and then try to fill these other positions. And Brad's got a good job up there. He's got one of the better jobs up there. He, he does an excellent job. I was up there today. We went over everything. Uh, he's doing a good job. He makes good money. He's, he's, but he has not gone to W-three to qualify us, nor, I don't think we got anybody in the organization right now that can do the paperwork by the twenty-eighth of August. Do you believe we do? You, you think there's somebody here?
I still believe that I can. And I've worked on those reports in the past. I have never signed them because I wasn't the person at the authority that I've worked on. They're, they are difficult, but they would be extremely difficult for you guys to look at.
Yeah.
If you've worked in this industry, you understand them. I'm not gonna sit here and say I know everything about everything. I haven't worked down there in quite a few years, but.
How many years since you worked down there?
Thirteen.
You think it's changed much down there?
No, not a lot. Now, some of the laws have, there's a.
Now, Mary Ellen tells me it's changed tremendously, so it's nothing.
Plan itself hasn't changed.
Okay. We got one issue at hand. Are you guys gonna pass the salary ordinance like the board of works asked you to, or are you not going to? If you're not going to.
Well, somebody has to make a motion, right?
Well, we have to vote on it.
I was gonna make a motion. Um, we have a meeting next week. I would, I would like for the, I would like for this, who is it? Can we not get ahold of this Becky? You're in touch with this Becky too? Um, can we not get, in writing, whether or not Brad's, um, can get an interim? And I would, um, I would solicit the people that we are talking about without names that has this W-three to please come forward, say yea or nay, would they, if they would be willing to do this, to, you know, to, to cover us. Um, I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know how to ask these questions, but I think the questions need to be asked to IDIM to see if this could be a possible route to go.
But.
We can always go on it next week.
But Connie, and like I said, I talked to Brad, what, what, I try to reiterate, we don't hire people. If you remember in the first part of the meeting, I asked the mayor, and nothing against the regulatory board of Brad, in the event we do not have this increase, what will the board of public works do? He says the only thing they can do is hire a firm to manage our utilities.
That's because he gave them two options, one or the other. There's been no other, there's been no other options.
My point being, I don't care how you guys feel. It doesn't matter to me. Okay? I'm just saying, we don't hire people.
Right. And I know Brad, I like Brad. Brad has a, Brad has a good job right now, but, but we can, theoretically, we can save a lot of money. If we can save, save some money and still get the job done. It's the job, it's the job that's being done right now. I mean.
Urban, didn't you say that he had a job paying as much as this job that he's wanting? Isn't that what you said in our meeting over there?
He.
Uh, you said, you said it was close.
Uh, I believe I asked him today, and, yeah, he's, he's got a good job. He works overtime to make that money, but the director will work a lot of hours to make that money too. Uh, he doesn't make eighty-five thousand dollars a year. No, he doesn't. He make, I don't know if I'm even, it's a.
I think you said sixty.
Huh?
You said sixty over there.
It's, it's a public record. Yeah, I mean, and I'm not gonna sit here and.
A little bit high.
Question.
Yeah, it's.
I thought it was high.
But I just, I just think it's worth, um.
Connie, if you're gonna tie my hands for another lead, you can handle it. I'm not handling it anymore. I've been messing with this for three and a half months. I've had it with it.
I wanna vote on whether or not we approve this money.
Then make a motion. Somebody make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
But then you're not, but then you're giving away the third option by voting that way.
You don't have that option.
We don't have it, Connie. What I've been saying, huh?
Why don't you have it?
Because the.
Board of works does.
The city council don't hire people.
We're just doing the money.
We just approved the money, really.
That's exactly right.
So we've just sat here and wasted our.
No, you, you can stop the whole thing by not opening the money.
But you only have another option. You've only had the other option that you've given us.
No, I'll have to go back to board of works if you wanna do another option, which I've always tried to accommodate the city council because they're elected by the people. Mr. Mayor, point of order. Mr. Baker?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. Mrs. Stevens made a motion. I don't hear a second.
She didn't make a motion. I don't know what she made a motion for.
Oh, I'm sorry. She made a motion that we vote on this.
Now, we'll vote on this issue.
We just wanna vote on it.
Which is the money.
I second it.
Okay, that's, we passed the ordinance, right?
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, what did you, what is your motion?
I want a vote.
Okay, this, this is an ordinance. You, you wanna consider this ordinance?
No, I wanna vote on whether or not we pass.
I'll make the motion to pass the ordinance.
Okay. Is there a second? We got a motion and a second to pass this ordinance, and it's ordinance number, uh, thirty-one twenty-six, uh. We got a motion and a second to pass this ordinance, and it's ordinance number 3126, let's say, salary ordinance. Everybody's read it, we've been over it a hundred times. Any further questions? We'll have a rule call.
Councilwoman Rish?
No.
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
No.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
No.
Hi, 32.
I have all we asked. Is there any other business to come before this council?
It's an ordinance, your honor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have to go.
I'm sorry, that's right. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on the third and final reading?
No.
And I'm telling this council, I'm washing my hands of this, if this is what you're gonna do. You don't know how difficult this is to get this in place, and you are sending a message to this person that we're not considering it, and he'll probably back away from it.
There are people a chance to get the job.
We've still got one council member that's not here, and that would break the tie.
He won't be here Monday either, though. He's out of town for a week.
Well, I mean, I, I, I really just, I think that having that in writing.
Having what in writing? We're in, we're in.
You wanted to call Becky at home.
Yeah, I did.
Get something in writing from her saying either, 'cause once.
But who's gonna train the chemists? That's where we come, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But who's gonna do the training? We have nobody do the training. Nobody. That's where, that's where I'm stuck. We don't have anybody to do this training that's mandated by IDIM. Am I correct or wrong?
But seriously, with, with all due respect, though, I don't think anybody sitting up here on this board, you have the best in this room. We all have our professionals, but.
You're not.
I, I, I don't know what kind of training that means, and.
Is it not in this letter?
For the pre-treatment. I mean, how, how do they exactly get their training?
They have to have a person that knows how to run a wastewater plant, like Mary Ellen, like the man I'm considering hiring, to train this person over a period of a year, a year and a half. There's still companies.
W3 or W4?
There's a lot more than just filling out the paper.
Yeah, that's what they did.
There's a lot more than filling out the paperwork for this thing. I'm gonna call IDIM and tell them my council will do it right, that's all I'm gonna do. And you guys can figure it out. We pay a 40, 50,000 dollar fine, that's the way it goes.
It's the way it goes.
I, I think we're doing a disservice to the people of Connor'sville. I think that, I do. I mean, listen, that one, that sewer plant, as you know, is not in the best of shapes. And if we don't get somebody down there to correct it, we're gonna have E. coli in our system, which has happened in, I believe was Indianapolis not long ago. So I think it's a disservice that when you turn on your water tap and you get crappy water, that's what you're gonna get. I mean, because we need help on here. They're telling us. I mean, to, to, to table this because we, for no reason, basically.
We already did, Gary.
Well, I understand that. I mean, you live with the fact that you're gonna drink doo-doo water.
I moved to adjourn.
If we pay 150,000 to 200,000 a year for an outside contractor, you folks can get ready for a rate increase, okay?
Yeah, they'll be all right.
We already got one ever since it put in.
Six months we've been getting.
I'm sorry?
Ours has been going up every month for six months. And we've had three people over there, and none of them can tell us why. There's no water leaks, we're not doing anything different.
I know families of five who pay $20 or more less than.
Less than we do.
I'm gonna ask you one more time. Do you wanna suspend the rules and consider this on third and final reading?
No.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sad day.
Second.
Don't make a motion.
Tired.
No, boy.